It is 6:35. I will call to order the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We do have a quorum present. Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, thank you for your interest in the district and in this issue. I had the pleasure and opportunity to attend a meeting last night at Carver Park Baptist Church in which we talked about some of the processes and procedures and the decorum for this evening. At that time, I was asked if I would consider moving up the audience for guests portion of the meeting. The thought being, we don't know how long we're going to be in closed session and you might be sitting out here a long while waiting on us. I have conferred with the board and we're in agreement, we're going to do that. And so the audience for guests will now be the next items. If you're looking at the agenda, we're going to take that out of order. Audience for guests is a portion of the meeting where we'll receive public comment. Back in 2012, this board adopted board operating procedures that have been revised in 2013, 2014. Those procedures provide for a total of 30 minutes for public comment at any one meeting. At the end of that 30 minutes, if a majority of the board wants to continue public comment, then they can vote to do so and we'll extend it. I don't know if that's likely tonight because there are a number of other things we need to get to, but we do want to hear. I want to share a couple of things that I shared with the folks last night. I went back and forth on whether to do public comment tonight. And for the last two weeks, a number of us have gotten a number of phone calls and text messages and emails from people in this community who have access to board members', cellphone numbers', and email accounts. And not everyone does. And folks who don't have board members', cellphone numbers', or email addresses still need to be heard on this issue. And so we decided we were going to make this opportunity available. And the folks who expressed concern, it wasn't because they didn't sincerely want to hear from you, it's because everyone knows it just takes one or two to misbehave or act up and it changes the entire atmosphere of this meeting. I say that because, for two reasons. Number one, I genuinely disagree with some people on this board from time to time. But I can also tell you, I know the heart of every person sitting up here. And every one of these people is doing what they're doing, no salary and no benefit because they want to do what's best for the children in this community and they want to do what's best for the Waco community as a whole. It does you no good to scream or accuse the very seven people who are going to make this decision. The very seven people who I can assure you worked incredibly hard two years ago to bring Dr. Nelson to this district. We know how talented he is. This is not any sort of hidden agenda. This is a matter of trying to come up with consequences for a lapse of judgment and a bad decision. The rules for audience for guests are as follows. You each have, when we call on you, you have three minutes total. Abby Ramirez is over here. She has an iPad with a large timer that will count down. So, and she's standing there, so if you're at the podium, you can see her counter and I can see the counter. And when you get to the three minutes, we'll shut it down. Three minutes is the maximum. Don't feel like you're required to use your three minutes. If you want to, if you can say it in less than that, that's also permitted. Also, I want to say something else. In a moment, I'm going to give you an opportunity to stand up. And if you came to make sure we know your support for one position or the other, then at that time, I'm going to ask you to stand and the board will see how you feel and we will note your support for either position. I say that because I want everybody to say whatever it is they want to say. But if somebody has already said what you feel you wanted to say, if you repeat it and we hear the same thing over and over again, that may not be productive. And it's okay to say, what I intended to say has already been said this evening, or I just wanted to note my support. And we'll, we will take that into account. But if you have a particular insight or perspective that you think maybe the board hasn't heard that we need to take into account before we go back and start discussing this, we do welcome you to share that. How are the folks going to be selected? Here's what we did. There was one place to sign up in the back, in the hallway. I am just going down the order in which you signed up. I am not handpicking. We're not going back and forth, one side or the other. We're just going down the list. And when the 30 minutes is up, when Mr. DeBeere tells me 30 minutes is up, we'll see if anybody wants to extend it and if not, we'll be done. And we'll begin and move on to the next part of the meeting. Again, where's Mr. DeBeere? He will let me know when the 30 minutes is up. I'll tell him when to start that timer. And then she will have the timer for the individual speakers. Everybody clear on the process? Yes, let's make sure the mic's on. You ready? I've got the names and addresses and I'll get that. Mic check, one, two, three. Mic check. Mic check, one, two, three. Because of the seating capacity, we have an overflow room next door and they're trying, they've got video, they're trying to make sure they can hear the audio.
Mic check.
All right. I guess we'll ask folks to speak up so that maybe they can hear in the room next door. It won't count against your three minutes, but if you, when you approach the podium, if you'll give your name and your address, is that what you asked for? Okay. And Ms. Cordwell, I want you to know, she's typing down here. She's not responding to emails. She's sincerely taking notes on what's said. All right. I'm going to tell you who's up and then the next two in line, and you can just stand over here by the security officer and then approach the podium and we'll try to move this along. First is Larry Weaver Senior, and then David Gray is behind Mr. Weaver, and then Peaches Henry would be third. If you want, go ahead and move over there. And Kyle. Is it you? I'm sorry, Larry. Had to long there.
Judah Covenant House of Prayer, Brookview Community Church, 2605 Mar. According to a report made by the Waco Tribune Herald on April 18, 2014, Waco ISD was issued a Stage Four Indicator for Disciplined Students, the most severe rating that could be given by the Texas Education Agency. Data, data from that TEA report indicated that black students were three times more likely to be placed in DAEP for offenses that don't automatically require that placement, such as being involved in a gang or threatening another student. About 60% of discretionary DAEP placements were black students, even though they make up about 30% of the student body. In response to this alarming inequitable trend, you, Waco ISD, righteously and wisely implemented an intervention coined as restorative justice. You placed behavior aids in every classroom so that teachers could spend more time teaching and students would spend more time in the classroom learning. The move was a win for the students, for all students, specifically the black students of Waco ISD and their parents. It was a win for teachers and a win for the individuals who have been able to secure employment in regard to facilitating the restorative justice model in those classrooms. We thank you for that timely, righteous, biblical intervention. Your actions indicate that you fully understand that consequences without the gentle breeze of restorative redemption is demonically criminal. So now, we have come to ask you on tonight and in the days to come to show the same restorative, redemptive mercies that you show to your own children and grandchildren, your families, and to the students of Waco ISD, to Dr. A. Marcus Nelson. As we look back at this situation decades from now, you have a grand opportunity not to display double-mindedness, for a double-minded man is unstable in all of his ways. You have a grand opportunity to display that you are not guilty of showing mercy to some and not showing it to all. What is best for the students of Waco ISD is also what is best for Dr. A. Marcus Nelson and everyone under the auspices of your God-ordained charge. The body of work that the Lord has used him to implement in our community is greater than his one error in judgment. At this point in time, what other person is there who could finish the body of work that Dr. Nelson has started? The Lord has planted him in our community. Your obedience brought him here, and your obedience to him will keep him here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Weaver. Stop the 30-minute clock for a second, because I promised these folks I was going to do something and I failed to do so. To move, again, I know a number of you are here just to express support and I want to give you an opportunity to do so. And I apologize for not doing it before we got into the audience for guests. But for those of you who are here to express support that Dr. Nelson continue as the superintendent of schools of Waco ISD, please go ahead and stand at this time. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And similarly, for those of you who, because of character issues, because of the message of the young people, believe that we need to terminate that employment for cause, would you please stand if you're comfortable doing so? All right. And thank you for coming out this evening. And I apologize for not doing that earlier. I want you to express yourselves. I'm not going to, I don't know if you've ever seen a Houston school board meeting, they make them do this, they won't let them clap. I'm going to let you clap, but I don't know how he's keeping time. I don't know if the clap counts on the 30 minutes or not, so you may be shortening the opportunity for us to hear from citizens. So with that, the second speaker is David Gray. And before you start, David, Peaches Henry will be next, and then Jocelyn Pierce is after Dr. Henry.
My name's David Gray. I live at 919 North 17th Street, Waco. Good evening, everyone. And I will be mercifully short. For me, this comes down to two competing fears. The first is a fear that the children will lose the leader who has made a positive difference in their lives and the success of Waco ISD over the last two years. The second fear, the competing fear, our children will believe, because of Dr. Nelson's actions of last week, that drug use is okay, even though that we're all against it. One of these is an absolute fact. In Dr. Nelson's short tenure leading Waco ISD, four of five campuses on the closure list have improved to the point they are no longer in danger of being shut down. The other, the other fear, is a possibility that nearly 6,000 people have rejected. I would ask that the board join us unanimously, and Dr. Nelson, in redoubling our efforts to see our children and community succeed. We are not naive, nor foolhardy. We lock our doors at night. We keep watch over our children, careful watch. Two years ago, Dr. Nelson was the man to steer our district's success, and he's demonstrated that success. He is the same man, imperfect as we all are. I would just say, thank you all for your time and give us the blessing of his support going forward. Thank you.
Peaches Henry will be next, followed by Jocelyn Pierce, and then John Durham. Mr. Gray referenced 6,000 people. Community note, there was an online petition, and Mr. Gray and his wife did come by my office in the last week, and the board does have a hard copy of that.
My name is Dr. Peaches Henry. I reside at 1337 Royal Oaks Drive. I stand before the board as the parent of a child who went through Waco ISD, an individual with longstanding involvement in the district, and a leader who is deeply engaged with the community. With the best interests of our students, their parents, and this community at heart, I write in support of the continued employment of Dr. A. Marcus Nelson as superintendent because of the transformational vision he has brought to the district, the impressive performance strides he has overseen in our schools, and the measurable increase in community engagement he has achieved. First, when the prevailing narrative about Waco ISD was that the Texas Education Agency would close five of our schools, Dr. Nelson had a different vision, one that saw our schools meeting the state's academic standards and remaining open. He convinced students, faculty, administrators, and the community of his vision for Waco ISD. Second, this new attitude regarding the Waco ISD has had a measurable impact on the academic performance of students. Those four schools that were considered to be rated improvement required after a year of Dr. Nelson's efforts are all but one now rated Met Standard. Third, as a direct result of Dr. Nelson's efforts, there has been an overwhelming increase in community involvement. Dr. Nelson has created an atmosphere of unity and trust around our schools. After years of the community being shut out, Dr. Nelson threw open the doors of Waco's schools and invited the community in. As a result, volunteer numbers jumped from 1,500 in 2016 to about 2,200 in 2017. The Waco ISD Board of Trustees must not allow a misdemeanor infraction to outweigh the considerable valuable work that Dr. Nelson has done in this district. Retaining Dr. Nelson could send a powerful message to the students of Waco ISD. When students see us fail as adults, we have the ability to teach them a crucial lesson. They learn that in the life, that in life, we fail. We fail people, we fail systems, and we fail ourselves. It is our failure that another chance can be extended. Dr. Nelson will emphasize to students that we fail forward. They will see that an individual can take responsibility for a mistake, make amends, and accept consequences. And Dr. Nelson, students will learn that his character and his accomplishments tell the story of someone deserving of a second chance. This is what our students will see. They will see the humbling moments of public humiliation that Dr. Nelson will face as he engages students, teachers, staff, board members, and the community. They will see the ways true, authentic leaders bounce back. They will see him fighting for them and their future as much as he is fighting to restore his own reputation.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Jocelyn Pierce is next, followed by John Durham, and then Andre Watkins.
Jocelyn Pierce, 1309 Timberline. As a retired educator and administrator, I ask you to consider the district's policy on marijuana possession for students in comparison with what you are contemplating today. When a student has possession of marijuana, he or she is placed in DAEP for 30 days minimum, 60 days maximum. The length of the DAEP stay is based on the severity of the offense, such as the amount of substance, behavior, and first-time or repeated offense. Once the time is served, the student is allowed to return to his or her campus, is encouraged to move forward and not engage in such behavior again, and is given the opportunity to resume his or her academic career. Discipline records of these students are kept for one year. So after that year, they are dismissed. In these instances, these students remain in the school setting. They're not expelled unless the occurrence is a felony. They're not ruined for life. We don't give up on the students when they make mistakes that cause them to have temporary setbacks. They're given consequences, and once the consequence period is over, we welcome and embrace them back into their natural school settings. Separating students from the school is not a part of this issue. It is necessary for students to be connected and have purpose. In reference to Dr. Nelson's current situation, we're not asking for his actions to be excused. We understand the laws of Texas and do not condone the behavior. And yes, consequences must be addressed. Yet we also recognize that this is a temporary setback and request that Dr. Nelson is given the opportunities to continue his vision for the students in Waco ISD. He has set an academic course that is moving this district in the right direction and has elevated the unity, stability, and morale, which has not been on this level since the administration of Dr. Roseanne Striplin. Just as most of the students who receive consequences for their actions can continue on their path, ultimately graduating from Waco ISD schools and becoming productive citizens in their respective communities, we ask for the same opportunity for Dr. Nelson to be allowed to resume the path of excellence for the students in this district. There's a difference between trying to be right and trying to get it right. Trying to be right is done by being too rigid with district policy, and trying to get it right is taking everything we have into consideration, such as the talent and dynamic leadership in Dr. Nelson. Let's not forget Houston ISD, which is not only the largest district in the state of Texas, but also the fourth-largest district in the nation, called our superintendent to interview for the position of superintendent in Houston ISD. They recognize the resource, stability, consistency, and value of what we have. What you need to do, Waco ISD board members, is figure a way to work this out and keep this ship sailing in the right direction.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. John Durham's next, followed by Andre Watkins, and then Galen Foreman.
John Durham, 3800 Laguna Vista here in Waco. Thank you, school board members, for your investment into our city and for your love for WISD children and teachers and parents. Your job is without pay, often without thanks, rarely without pressure, and never without outside opinions. Everyone in Waco tonight wants to sit in your chair to make the decision, and no one wants to be sitting in your chair to absorb the fallout from your decision. This is a heavy night for you. This is a heavy night for Waco, and I deeply hope that the decision that you make neither brings cheers nor anger, but instead acceptance, whichever way it goes. Our ISD has made two great strides. Race relations, while still a long ways to go, have taken many steps forward, and many have paid a lot in taxes and tears and toil just to have a city blow up emotionally tonight over a decision where both sides have very reasonable merits and arguments. Waco has been shining a little brighter since the bleak darkness of a Jesse Washington lynching, a Davidian burning, Twin Peak shootings, and Baylor football firings. Let's keep shining brighter as a people and a city, no matter the outcome of tonight. This can't be about emotion. It has to be about truth. This can't be about race. It has to be about what's best. This can't be about us. It has to be about the kids of Waco. So when I come to a place where a decision seems so difficult for me and there's seemingly exact weight on both sides, anytime I can make a decision between law and grace, I land on grace. That's what I want from others, and certainly what I want from God. So I urge you, board, to vote for grace, not leniency, definitely not without penalty. But I ask you to vote for grace for Dr. Nelson and retain him as our superintendent. Give him consequences for the short term, and then let's move forward together for the long term with the business of creating the best ISD possible and imaginable for our kids. As a pastor, I do not speak on behalf of my church. I speak for me. And I, for one, will support whatever decision you make, even if it does not fall in my camp or my hope. Anytime you have the ability to reasonably land on grace or law, go with grace. Thank you, board.
Pastor Durham, thank you. Andre Watkins is next, followed by Pastor Foreman and then Pastor George Johnson, Jr.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. I'm Andre Watkins. I reside at 1025 Princess Diana. Labeled as McGregor, but my water says Waco. I'm a former employee as well as a parent of two children who have come through Waco ISD, one who is a ninth grader at Waco High, and my daughter Andrea who graduated with honors and is now a freshman at Sam Houston State. I stand before you to represent my children and others who are associated with them. I'm an advocate for children, the same as when I was with the district. And when I talk to the children regarding the fallout around this, the main thing that I took from them was that we flirted with restorative justice as a district. We did not get all the way in the water with it. And it brought tremendous results, as each of you all know. You have the data. I've presented it to you before, and if need be, I will bring it to you again personally. Seeing that with our toe in the water, we made tremendous strides, and Dr. Nelson came in and pushed us even further along the way with some of his measures. I think it unconscionable to not use those same things that got us out of a pit to further continue to take us up the mountain. I think it is our duty and our responsibility to be on the forefront of this and be seen as an agent of change and an agent of continuation of the change that has already been perpetuated under the tenure of Dr. Nelson. While he and I didn't always see eye to eye on restorative justice, I understand that. And yet still, I stand as a staunch advocate for his being restored into our community. The honesty that I stand here with is from the heart, and it's from the heart of our children who I represent. They want Dr. Nelson. And I know we want what's best for our kids. And if truly they are the thing that's most important, then the decision we need to make doesn't require much thought. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andre. Reverend Foreman, followed by Reverend Johnson, and then Virginia Dupuy.
Good evening. My name's Galen Foreman. I reside at 139 River Ridge, Waco, Texas. I'm here today, I've shared how I thank God for the board and for the great job they've done, grateful to Dr. Nelson for the awesome job he's done. Not condoning why we're here, not in any ways saying he should not be punished, but I'm here to say that I believe with all my heart that he deserved to redeem himself. I believe that because years ago, I made some mistakes. I got off course. There were those who would have tarred and feathered me, who would have thrown a book at me, but I'm grateful there were some people who thought enough to say, he can redeem himself. And here it is, 40 years later, I haven't been on any drugs, haven't sold any, haven't done anything, but tried to help people. If God allowed me to redeem myself, gave me a second chance, and now I pastor one of the greatest churches on the planet, I've been able to work at Baylor University and graduate 100% of my athletes that we recruited, I've been able to work at the state of Texas and make it up to management level. The same person who made those mistakes, who they were ready to write off, who some said shouldn't have a second chance, with a second chance, I've been able to make a difference, a positive difference, and I believe Dr. Nelson will do the same. I ask you to consider that.
Thank you, Pastor. Pastor Foreman, thank you. Pastor George Johnson, Jr., followed by Virginia Dupuy, and then Dr. Eliana Newman.
Good evening. George Johnson, Jr., 3500 Lake Heights, Waco, Texas. President Atkins and members of the school board, approximately two years ago, the WISD board solicited input from its internal and external stakeholders as the district wrestled with making monumental and controversial decisions relative to repurposing of underutilized facilities and the potential of closing some of our neighborhood schools. The board wanted and received invaluable feedback from parents, the business community... The Board wanted and received invaluable feedback from parents, the business community, community citizens, and leaders who lived near or were concerned about the plight of several campuses that were being considered for repurposing. I hope you will agree during your strategically scheduled Town Hall forums, you received numerous thoughtful, creative ideas and comments from the stakeholders who were in attendance. The community knew that you heard and valued the community's input that had been shared during the forums because you incorporated several of the ideas that were received into the district plan, which were submitted to the state of Texas Oversight Agency. Now, I realize the issues associated with repurposing our precious assets were not as contentious as is the primary reason we are here tonight. However, I am prayerfully and hopefully and hopeful that you would receive our comments and that you would also process tonight what has taken into and taken to consideration the feedback that has been given thus far. I truly believe that you would be hard-pressed to find anyone in the community that would not emphatically agree that the WISD has come a long way in a relatively short period of time. Those of us who got here early enough to get into the room, the building tonight represents only a fraction of the stakeholders who believe that the district is currently going in the absolute right direction. I and numerous others also believe that continuing the tenure of Dr. A. Marcus Nelson as superintendent of WISD is in the best interest of our students first and foremost. And we continue to strengthen the excellent relationships and support between the district and all the district stakeholders. Lastly, to this excellent Board, you have incorporated community input in dealing with other difficult decisions, and we are hopeful that you will incorporate our comments and input into your decision process tonight as well. We are praying for you, as we are praying for Dr. Nelson.
Virginia Dupuy is next, followed by Dr. Eliana Newman and then Liz Legawa.
I thought Dr. Nelson would be here, so part of what I planned to say was for him, but I'll alter things slightly. School Board, you've been thrust into an untenable situation. There are no easy answers or a win-win solution. You have to come up with some kind of win-win solution that's almost impossible to conceive. You work hard to bring your best wisdom to this Board, and that is all we can ask. I only request that you make your decisions based on what you believe in your minds and your hearts, and so that the whole community can begin to move with health, wisdom, and unity. I stand with you, whatever you decide. And I should say, Carrie did not know what I was going to say, nor am I representing my family when I say this, but I stand with you, whatever you decide, and I pledge to work with you in helping whatever way I can. To our shared community, I urge you to join me in that pledge. I was going to say to Dr. Nelson, he has embodied in us a deep hope that we have long yearned to have in and for our city. He has given us hope and vision, and we will be forever grateful, no matter what happens. Whatever his near future holds, I trust he will face those impulses that let him take actions that have inadvertently created such chaos for us all. I hope he will access what is needed to help him heal and move to a healthier state of mind that more wisely guides future actions. Out of that shock and disappointment as a community, we're all in grave danger of losing sight of the shared vision and forgetting our love for Dr. Nelson because we fear for our children. And I hope that all of us will be capable of a deeper vision, a deeper wisdom. Community and our anguish over Dr. Nelson's actions and their potential consequences, we are all distressed and frankly scared. We must not turn on each other. I beg us all not to go there. There's no room for quick judgment or anger here. It is not our charge, it is our charge, to stand together and help begin to heal from our shared pain, disappointment, and hurt. Dr. Nelson and the community, whatever our Board decides, I pray we will all be patient and steadfast in our love for our children, their families, WISD teachers, administrators, and staff. And whatever we do and say, let's stand by each other and demonstrate the same courage, integrity, love, and respect that we expect of our children. I pray God will be with us all tonight and in the weeks to come.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Dr. Eliana Newman is next, followed by Liz Legawa and then Sonia Zatah? Communities and schools. Does that help? Dr. Newman?
Dr. Eliana Newman, 449 Stone Manor Drive. I am a member of the Waco Transformation Zone School Board, as well as a faculty physician here in Waco. And I find it necessary to speak today because rarely in my long career of service and advocacy for children and for the underserved have I met someone with the positive energy of Dr. Nelson. And I have only recently been in this community, and I have been impressed with the way that everybody has come together to find a better future and progress for all the citizens of Waco. The bridges that he builds in the community are remarkable. And it saddens me to think that one mistake could in any way slow down the progress that I feel that we are making as citizens of Waco. I support him 100%, and I think that sometimes through adversity, we can find the strength to become even more effective leaders, to find more empathy, to find better ways of listening and of growing together. And I think this is one of the opportunities where through a time of difficulty on the other side, I think all of us can be strengthened by this experience. In the end, we do have to think about the children, and one of my jobs is taking care of children. And I've been very careful to listen to my patients, to their families, and have found nothing but support for him. And so I feel very comfortable in standing here advocating for him as a way of advocating for the community that I serve so passionately.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Elizabeth Legawa, followed by Sonia, and then Bill Veneta.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Legawa. I reside at 1505 and 1/2 Austin Avenue. President Atkins and Board members, thank you for allowing us a time to speak and to have a conversation that actually I've been waiting for. Last week, I had a conversation that I didn't want to have with my son yet, who is a student in Waco ISD School. I had to explain to him what marijuana was. I had to correct him because he thought it was a drink. And I had to explain to him also what it means for when we break the law and what it means for his superintendent, who he has so much pride in when he breaks the law. My son doesn't look like all of your children. I have a black son. And the truth is, there is disproportionality that's going to affect his life. So when I think about leadership, I don't think about Pat. Pat, you're great, but I don't think about Elijah's looking up to Pat. Elijah's looking up to his mother first. I am the leader in my home. The conversations that happen there are the most important. I'm standing on behalf of the parents of WISD students because we have a lot to offer to this conversation. And you want to know what kids think? I can tell you what my son thinks. My son thinks that marijuana is wrong. But my son, I've also told him that when we make mistakes, that we have to own up to it, and we have to take the consequences for what comes. And as leaders of our community, Board members, as leaders, I'm looking at you, and also my son is looking at you too. How are you going to handle this? He has, being a black male, his chances of being incarcerated are 1 in 3. A white male is 1 in 18. And that's not because black males are more criminal. It's because of the conditions and the realities of our society. And so I want you, Board members, to think about how we move forward, because I think we have to move forward together and not cower. We have to rise. There are many laws in this state, in this city, that would have made me legal for standing here, where I would have lived. And I want you to think about my son, Elijah, as you're making this decision, because I know that you're thinking about a lot of kids, but I want you to hear Elijah. This nine-year-old, who is not scared. And the complexity of this decision means that our leadership has to be even higher. If it was easier, black and white, it would be easy, we'd be done with it, but it's complex. And because it is complex, we take our leadership to the highest level. Thank you for allowing our comment.
My address is 2011 Morrow Avenue. I work for communities and schools at Indian Spring Middle School. Just to be clear, I'm not speaking for our organization, just myself. I work with some of the smartest, most resilient students who have infinite potential in their lives. No matter how you decide moving forward, I don't think that will change. I personally think that Dr. Nelson has shown us with his vision and expertise, he can provide our students and this district with opportunities that will lead to success. I believe he should have the opportunity to continue to do so. However, I'm not standing here just to communicate that. As someone who interacts with middle schoolers every single day, Monday through Friday, I request that there would be a structured, practical way in which students are able to process this event and this outcome in a healthy and safe space. Many of my students are confused. Many of my students are afraid of losing a superintendent that they love and can relate to. Many of my students are wondering what the outcome will mean for themselves. Whether it be a practical resource, such as discussion guides that are given to staff or a video from the School Board explaining to them what the decision is and how it came to be that way, I think there needs to be something communicated to students. It's up to your discretion on what that would look like, but I do believe it should be considered. Our students will be able to learn from any outcome, and I hope that their fears will be considered as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Would you have one more speaker? Mr. DeBeere just gave me the time sign, so Mr. Veneta will be our final speaker this evening. Well, let Mr. Veneta speak, and then we'll decide if the Board wants to extend the time.
Thank you, President Atkins, other members of the Board. My name is Bill Veneta. I'm an attorney here in Waco. I live at 1000 Briar Drive in Waco. I've lived here for over 54 years. I've been an attorney for over 46 years. I also am a graduate of a seminary. I'm also a licensed minister. I'm not here to speak to you as a licensed minister. Religious liberty says we won't mix church and state. You are a subdivision of the state of Texas, and that's what I want to address you as this evening. The best interest of our children shall always remain paramount. I'm speaking in opposition to retaining Dr. Nelson. The purpose or the reason for that is that it sends a bad message to our children that it's all right for our top administrator to engage in criminal activity. It's a violation of the state of law to have possession of marijuana. Dr. Nelson knew it. He did it anyway. He's an educated man. He understood it. He understood it had consequences. I read in last Sunday's paper where the ISD, WISD, had terminated a teacher's aide for doing the same thing that Dr. Nelson did. Now, are you going to invite this person back and say, "We made a terrible mistake. We apologize to you. We want to reinstate you because we required you to resign for doing the same thing that Dr. Nelson did"? Are you going to do that? I expect you would under the circumstances. I understand you say every individual is different. We treat every individual different. The problem is, is that the law doesn't change per individuals. You cannot have a double standard. You must be consistent in the law that you have. And I'm here to tell you, I'm a former police officer, and I'm here to say today that you're sending the wrong message to our students. People are watching, not just in Waco, not in McClintock County, not just in other school districts, not just in the state of Texas, public officials, the Board of Education, people outside this state are watching. Are we going to have a situation where that people say, "Well, they have a pot-smoking or pot-possessing superintendent in the WISD in Waco, Texas"? Think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Veneta. That concludes the time. I will entertain any motion to extend time from any of the Board members.
Mr. President, I would move that we allow time for two more presenters.
All right, there's been a...
I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded. There's no debate on that. All those in favor of extending the time for two more presenters, say aye. All those opposed? We'll have two more presenters. First will be Bridget Eichenberg, and then the last will be Nancy Lacy.
I'm Bridget Eichenberg, and I live at 4817 Lockwood. I'm a junior at Waco High, and I have loved and respected Dr. Nelson since the day he has come to our district. I always work hard because I want to make Dr. Nelson, Waco High, and our district proud. So when I heard what had happened to our district, I was just absolutely crushed. But a few weeks ago, in my physics class, a student I know was kicked out for using marijuana, and he was kicked out of Waco High. So the question that I have wrestled with is, what message are we sending to the students if we're not holding our own superintendent to the same standard that we hold our own students to? Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget Eichenberg. We have one more speaker, and that's Nancy Lacy.
Can I let Tom Stanton speak for me?
He's not the next one on the list. If you yield your time, I've got to go to the next one on the list.
All right, then I'll speak. My name is Nancy Derrick Lacy. I grew up here in the WISD system. I went to Richfield High School and graduated in the class of 1980. My daughter is a graduate of Waco High School. I have been a substitute teacher at one time. I've been on the PTA. I've been a member of the CDMC for Lake Air and Waco High, and I currently sit on the CDMC at Waco High School. While I recognize that this is a serious and unfortunate situation, Dr. Nelson has been a very stabilizing and positive leader. He has been very supportive of our principals and teachers, and he has been open and honest to our students. While I wish that this was not the way that we'd have to teach a lesson, here we are. While I wish that this was not the way that we'd have to teach a lesson, here we are. I think that we can teach accountability through punishment and redemption. And I think that real redemption through hard work and to restore the trust is the way we should go. Forgiveness is needed because we have all faltered at one time. I support Dr. Nelson to lead us through his mistake and into the future so that we can be stronger for it. I hope that you will vote in favor to support Dr. Nelson. I thank you for your service and leadership and I thank everybody for coming and supporting our students.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. I know this is a difficult topic and I know there are decisions we'll make tonight that could have consequences for years into the future. I just want to thank all of you for your approach tonight and for showing anybody who watches this meeting on the internet and in Waco, Texas, we can discuss difficult issues with respect and civility. And thank you for doing that this evening and showing that. At this time, we're going to move back up to item three and the Board is going to recess into closed session to specifically address item six, or 6A, which is the discussion and possible action by the Board regarding consequences and possible contract employment implications for Dr. Marcus Nelson. And we're going to do so in accordance with section 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. I don't know how long we're going to be back there. I will also tell you, it is possible that this Board will recess and discuss what transpired. We may not come to a resolution tonight. The same item is actually posted again Thursday night in case people want more time or want to gather more information. And so I can't guarantee you there will be a final resolution tonight. There was reference from, I believe, Mrs. Dupuy about Dr. Nelson. He is here and we're going to meet with him. His request was that he not have to sit with the crowd this evening and we honored that. But we are going to meet with him at this time and I can't tell you how long we will be back. But once we come back, I can assure you there will be no decisions made back there. We won't take any action back there. Any final decisions or actions will be taken from this dais later this evening. All right? And with that, we'll recess into closed session at this time. It is 11:55 and we've been in closed session under sections 551.074 and 551.071 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. I told you all a few hours ago, it was possible we may get to a point where we're not going to be able to take action tonight just because of the lateness of the hour. And that's where we are. And so what we're going to do at this time is go ahead and adjourn for the night and we will take this back up and we are again posted on this exact same language for Thursday night, okay? And so hearing no objection at 11:55, we'll stand adjourned.